Welcome to the April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five School Board Meeting. Would you please join me for a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you join us for the pledge?
Ladies and gentlemen, we have students here from Cookmont Elementary. We have Sawyer Chessley, Ryan Henry, Aurora Williams, and Mia Arturi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I need to make an addition under D, adding D two, Lyle Cookmarten, DCHS Projects. To remove five C, five-year strategic plan. Have any other additions or changes?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Have a motion to approve the agenda that's changed in a second. Any other discussion?
Oh, please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the minutes from the previous meetings.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes from a previous meeting in a second. Any other discussion?
Oh, please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. Next, we have public comment on actionable items. Thank you, Ms. Hall. You're fine. You're on there as communication. You're good. Next on the agenda is director contract discussion. Mr. Hall?
Board members, I've talked to Dr. Sutherland. There's one issue to work out with respect to vehicle. And I just haven't touched base with her account. But I would recommend that we approve her contract as presented and align the dates. You know, we started the contract in May, but align it so that it runs school year to school year now.
Adding an additional year to make it for a year term?
That's correct.
Have any discussion?
Is that the only changes?
And we added a two percent rise.
Move to approve.
Just, just to be clear, board members, that's, that's with either a vehicle stipend or just how, how we get that worked out so that it benefits Director Sutherland in tax-wise.
That's how I understood it.
Okay.
Do you have a motion? Did you second Steve or not?
Please.
On my way, he did second. Okay. Please vote.
Six yeses.
We have recognitions.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we have several recognitions tonight, and I would like to start with Hannah Timmons. Hannah made All-State Choir, and she is the only one in the entire district that made that. So congratulations. Members, I would like to recognize some students from Creekwood that made about thirty and above on ACT, and that is significant. So I'm going to call the whole list when I mention your name, if you would come forward, please. Lucas, Alexan, Ava Beckwith, Willow Blanks made a thirty-one. Ava made a thirty-two. Lucas made a thirty. Impressive. Nicholas Cranfield, thirty. Alyssa Grum, thirty-three. Elijah Larkins, thirty-one. Gabriel Mann, thirty-two. Chase Parker, thirty. Caitlin Quintanilla, sorry if I missed that, thirty-three. William Berry, thirty-one. Philip Lackey, thirty-three. Riley McKnight, thirty-two. Natalie Russo, thirty-one. James Gallagher, thirty. Parker Knight, thirty. Congratulations to. Thirty, ten, thanks. Thirty-six is the highest score, so that lets you know something. Impressive scores. Next recognition, if Mr. LaCombe will come forward. Shiloh Schrader won first place in, in preparing speaking competition at the Tennessee State Fair. Shiloh is a sophomore at Dixon County High School and the Secretary of Future Farmers of America. And I will say she has a beautiful voice. She did a great job in the play. Thank you for being here. Thank you. We have two Dixon County High School Drama Club folks, Jacob Butler and Anna Catcher. These two freshmen competed against freshmen across Middle Tennessee and won both of the T-Pac Spotlight Awards Rising Star Scholarships. Impressive. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you. Give a shout out to Noah Armstrong. Noah could not be here tonight, but Noah set a record for Dixon County. It was a school record on the shot put. And so I do have a picture of him. He couldn't be with us. He can't be with us next month. But congratulations to Noah Armstrong. Ms. Melissa, can you come forward, please? Well, as many of you know, we have our transportation radio, and we have three awards to give out. So, Ms. Melissa? We had our first middle and west Tennessee school board driver radio competition on Saturday, March twenty-ninth at Creekwood High School. There are three classes, type D, type C, and type A. First place out of seventeen contestants in the type D bus was Jerry Lewis. Jerry has qualified for the state competition in June at Pigeon Forge. This Sunday? So the competition will not be at Pigeon Forge. They decided to have it in Dixon at the fairgrounds. So congratulations to you. Thank you. Can you show the picture shirt on the back? Turn around to the audience. Mr. Jerry, our second place out of seventeen contestants for type D, I guess licensed, Sherri Weaver. Bus. Congratulations, Ms. Sherri. And second place of eleven contestants, type C, was Vance Harden. Well, I hope we're Texas bound. Okay, so this is exciting. Can my girls from flag football come up here and meet with me? Did you like it? I'm going to get in the middle here.
And next, we have student board representatives. Baldwin?
Yes. Okay. Good evening, members of the board. Thanks for letting me share what's been going on at Creekwood. The last few weeks have been super busy. Lot of happenings and celebrations, and let's be honest, a little bit of crazy to go along with students counting down until days of summer. We've got a mix of excitement, stress, and energy in the air, but overall, it's been a really great time at Creekwood. In athletics, our spring sports teams have been working hard and seeing great results. The boys tennis team has qualified for the team district tournament and will face Rossview in the first round on Monday. Next Thursday, the individual tournaments for both boys and girls will begin, taking place at Swan Lake and Austin P. Baseball is celebrating its senior night tonight, a special evening to honor our senior players and their contributions to the program. Softball will host its senior night on May first, and the team will begin its district tournaments in just two weeks. Boys soccer will participate in a JV tournament on May second, giving younger athletes valuable game experience and a chance to shine. General news at the wood. There's a lot of excitement building as we count down just fifteen days left until graduation, and even sooner, prom is tomorrow. And students are thrilled to celebrate this special tradition. Last week, we announced our annual red, silver, and blue winners, recognizing outstanding students across our school. The blue award went to Lily Killabrew. The red award went to Josie Bledsoe. And the silver award went to Ava Beckwith. We also honored two students for their exceptional citizenship, Hunter Scott and Chloe Brewer. Our Hostess Chapter will hold its end-of-the-year banquet on May ninth, wrapping up a successful year of service and competition. Today marked the last day of clinicals for our senior health science students, and our senior work-based loading students will finish their placements on May second. Academics. Testing season is in full swing at Creekwood. We're currently wrapping up end-of-course exams in math with biology and U.S. history exam scheduled for next week. We're also looking forward to Senior Awards Day, which will be held on Thursday, May eighth. This special event will highlight leaders and high achievers from both academic and athletic departments and recognize the hard work of the class of 2025. Thank you again for your continued support of our school and student body. And since this is my last meeting, I want to say how thankful I am that I got to be here each month and share what's going on at our awesome school. It's honestly been such a cool experience, and I've really enjoyed getting to be a part of this. Thanks for letting me represent Creekwood. It's been an honor and kind of fun. It's always a great day to be a Red Hawk.
Thank you. Lily, you have done an excellent job representing Creekwood, and we thank you. And we wish you well at cheering for Austin P. You are going to be fabulous.
Thank you.
So thank you for all the work you've done.
Thank you.
Next, under communications, we have some speakers tonight. The first one is Ms. Masters.
I was, I was very impressed when I saw the students tonight. How wholesome and, and just, it was wonderful to just watch what was going on in the schools. And I, it really uplifted myself just to think that that's how it is. I'm really talking, I came to talk about the use of CNN as a curriculum in four of our Dixon County schools. And an epiphany for me of late has been that I really feel nationwide we have to come together in more unity. The divisiveness on either side just has to stop because it's not leading where we choose it to go. And I don't know how much that is really part of this situation here, but I don't think having any mainstream media representation in the schools is wise. I would feel the same way if it was Fox News. You know, it's not about where I'm aligned philosophically or politically. It's just I don't think it's a wise thing because I think it increases divisiveness. I think that many people have the opinion that CNN is a biased source. I think many people feel the same way about Fox News. So it's not about that. It's about, I don't think it's an appropriate venue for any school curriculum. I had the honor today of seeing and even asking questions of our federal legislator, Jeff Burchett. I was very, I was very inspiring, really. He's a wonderful man. And he just happened to, throughout this story, and I think that this should just give us a little bit of pause. He said that he happened to be going home, he owns a sixty-acre farm here in Tennessee. And just when he pulled up into the parking lot, he just flipped on the radio, and it was NPR. And he happened to hear one of the, you know, announcers or whatever they called at NPR say, "What do you think propaganda is?" And the answer was, "Lee Greenwood's proud to be an American." And I thought, "That's exactly what I'm talking about." He, that's what motivated him to really get involved with trying to defund NPR. But that's the thing. I would love to see, no matter where people, how they view anything, it's, is that we're really lucky to be in America. We're really lucky to be citizens. It's a beautiful, wonderful country, country, and I'm really proud of it. And I'm just encouraging that patriotism in any way it can show up in the curriculum, in the class. I mean, I see the students are wonderful. I just think that's an element that, you know, can be added and maybe enhanced even more. So that love of country, it just seems so, so important, especially now with what we're seeing in our country, bringing more unity regardless. The other thing I did choose to mention is not so much a respect for the person that holds the office. I know there's a lot of different opinions about that, but a respect for the office itself. We should not forget just to, to have that respect for the office, not necessarily for the person. And I think that's something, again, that needs to be inculcated. So my request is to really remove CNN as part of the curriculum. I don't think it's wise, and I don't think it encourages unity. I think it sparks more divisiveness. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Harris.
I don't mean this to be her. That could be quite as nice as hers. After meeting with the principal, vice principal, and career teacher at Charlotte Elementary School about the irrelevant, value-distracting, low-quality, misleading, factual fallacies of the propaganda being provided by the CNN episodes in the sixth-grade career class, the principal left the decision up to the teacher. It's professional judgment. There wasn't anything professional about lying to kids with a video and not providing any kind of explanation. Best-case scenario, there is severe apathy here. The study of climate change is complex. It is composed of a multitude of domains of studies such as meteorology, oceanography, hydrology, physics, chemistry, mathematics, computer science, biology, and more. It is a very complicated domain because it's attempting to give an answer to something that is vast and deep and unpredictable. I can assure you that no one is an expert in any of these, in all of these domains, and no one can predict the rate at which the climate will change, nor the economic impact to any degree of certainty. In addition, the most advanced models need to make broad assumptions on many critical components due to lack of high-quality, fine-grained data points and compute power. The teachers, staff, and parents of this. The teachers, staff, and parents of this school district are not experts in all the fields of climate change. In fact, I'd be shocked if there is one that is considered an expert in more than one of these distinct disciplines. Therefore, if we're going to provide instruction on this ambiguous topic, we need to rely upon other institutions or groups that have a high, that have a high level of competence in this specialized domain. The decision-making process for determining what study to follow should include reviewing the content, at a minimum, spot checking validity of the content, follow the money, especially for hard-to-prove claims. Who benefits from the claim being true? Who is funding the study? Do the claims provide well-backed, evidence-driven reasoning that is balanced with human interests? Agriculture has an important role in our country and the world, without it, we starve to death. Why are these teachers demonizing it? Why are these teachers espousing a belief in deep ecology, which is where the Earth's interests are prioritized over human interests of existence? What is being done about these false statements of fact being presented by teachers? What is, what is being done about intentionally misleading statements for the purpose of building a strong emotional appeal to save the planet that intentionally omit the counter evidence? Here's some examples: septic systems are bad for the environment. These are real-life examples in this school, Charlotte. Most wildlife is being destroyed to clear land for cattle. You should eat insects instead of animal protein. That's in the elementary school, by the way. Citing the Palestinian Ministry of Health as fact and ignoring the IDF statements on the same matter, glorifying a terrorist organization. Where is the reasoning? These are presented as memorization facts when in fact they are disinformation. Say these teachers succeed, and they convince these kids that septic tanks equal bad, Hamas equal credible, and not bad, insects equal food, and Uncle Benji with his cows is an evil guy for destroying the planet and our future. How does it benefit our community by having this whole new young generation of Tennesseans believe in these falsehoods? How would that change our county? I won't allow my girls to falsify their word. That, that girl is honest, she has integrity, she got the integrity award three months ago. I won't allow them to answer a question in a way that the teacher wants them to answer it, just so they'll get a good grade, even though they know that it's wrong. These teachers are indoctrinating the kids. We only have a short amount of time with these kids. After removing this destructive, intellectually dishonest material, think about the wholesome, honest, thought-provoking instruction we could replace it with. We have a chance to-
Bye.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Holes.
Stop, minute. Over here, sir. Okay.
Sir, you can't hand out individual things to board members, you can hand it to the chair.
I only have six, so I should have made one for you, ma'am. That's some backup.
Oh, good evening, my name is Dennis Foltz, I'm a Dixon resident, and I want to comment on the use of CNN 10 in CTE classrooms. So about CNN, it's generally known as one of the most anti-current government news groups out there. It's also one of the least-watched major networks. For instance, this last quarter, 2025, Fox averaged just over 3 million viewers a day. CNN averaged about 18% of that, 558,000. Accuracy, in October of '23, CNN reported an Israeli rocket had hit a Gaza hospital, killing hundreds of people. CNN got its information from Hamas and reported it word for word. Actually, it turned out, and they had the issue of retraction, Hamas had put their own rocket in the hospital parking lot, and it accidentally blew up and killed all the people, had nothing to do with Israel. On March 23rd this year, CNN again used the Hamas release, saying 50,000 people had been killed since the war in Gaza started. And that was fact-checked, turned out that they included natural deaths, deaths that had nothing to do with the war, and they fudged their numbers and had incomplete data. So again, they were an intentional Hamas mouthpiece. On April 16th this month, CNN ran a story on Health and Human Services Secretary Kennedy's press release on, a press conference on autism. And discrediting the current administration, CNN quoted people in their article who stated that Kennedy was out of his lane because better diagnoses had caused autism increases in reporting. They ignored Kennedy's presentation of a new study from California that now shows that autism is one out of 12 and a half kids, not one out of 30, which is what's been going on. And had they given that information out, they couldn't have argued that it was simply a diagnostic issue and not a real issue, as Secretary Kennedy is arguing, that we need to find the cause of it. So, I have numerous other examples where they've just gone astray completely. And so I think using them as a basis, given their biases and the way they report, is not doing a service for the children. So why is CNN offering CNN 10? A drastic loss of viewership. CNN is using the credibility of this school district to teach children that CNN is a trusted source, because it's put up every day, children told, "Watch it," and then write about it. So your use of CNN is branding for a new generation of potential viewers. This isn't student service, it's student capture. What are the alternatives? Fox News? I say not. Each of us has our own opinion on where to find social and political information. Some of us, ABC, NBC, CNN, Fox, the debate could go on and on, and it's a debate that this district should studiously avoid. Parents should be majorly responsible for choosing and discussing their children, with their children, access to television information. Teachers are paid to teach, interact with their students. For many, students may be one of their main face-to-face communications with a non-parental adult when they come to school. Most students' interactions are with each other and social media. How refreshing it would be for the district to remove the TVs from the classrooms and allow and encourage teachers to be a role model of meaningful adult interaction that students don't always encounter. I suggest dump the TVs, dump the laptop-only learning, let, require, if need be, teachers and students to interact as humans, face-to-face, sharing and debating ideas and thoughts, rather than simply sitting at computers and watching television, calling that learning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harris.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Harris, and I am a proud mom of two beautiful, smart, funny girls, one of whom I have the pleasure to introduce to you tonight. This is Shelby, she's a sixth grader and back-to-back winner of all As and Bs awards, and she also earned the hardest worker in history, as well as the Tiger Award recipient for integrity. At Charlotte Middle School, the creed is, remember, at CMA, we're all about teamwork, integrity, growth, enthusiasm, and respect. That's the Tiger Way. When she received this honor, Shelby's younger sister asked what integrity meant, and in that moment, I struggled to describe it in a way that she would understand. The Cambridge Dictionary definition of integrity is the quality of being honest and having strong moral principles that you refuse to change. My husband and I strive to instill these values in our children. In sixth grade, as part of the required related arts curriculum, students spend a semester in careers class. My first thought when I heard this was, 12 years old seems like an early age to start this career conversation. Many adults spend years trying to figure out what line of work is right for them. I personally have changed career paths three times in my adult life. But upon further consideration, it is not a bad idea to introduce possibilities to young students, at least get them thinking about what avenue may appeal to them. To my surprise, in the in-class careers curriculum, unfortunately, appears to be completely unrelated and irrelevant. It turns out that at the middle schools in this, the four middle schools in the district, CNN 10, which is a district-approved but not required material, is shown on a daily basis. Upon learning this, my husband and I reviewed an entire month's worth of CNN 10 episodes between the two of us. CNN is a 10-minute news segment geared towards middle and high-school-age kids produced by CNN. It shows a hip, young host presenting the news in a way in what they claim is a neutral way. I can assure you, it is biased and/or false at best, and flat-out indoctrination at worst. We discovered plenty of examples of one-sided opinion that was stated as fact. When we approached school administration with this information, they claimed that the instructor uses CNN 10 as a way to present current events and then allow the students an opportunity to reflect by responding to a writing prompt. It is still unclear to me how current events relates to careers. I don't know about y'all, but in our home, we do not watch the news. Actually, very little of our time is spent in front of a television screen at all. The majority of movies and shows, et cetera, that my children consume is coincidentally while they're in school session. If we were to turn, tune into the news, CNN would certainly not be the network of our choosing. While they do adhere to their own ideals, ideals of strong moral principles that they refuse to change, CNN is severely lacking in the honesty department. By continuing to include CNN 10 in the classroom, we are not adhering to the CMA Tiger Way. Recently, I spoke with Mr. Aaron Parker, the school board representative for where we live, and I appreciate the conversation, and like the old adage says, "If you want a puppy, ask for a pony." Well, school board, my pony would be to ask you to remove all television and movies from the classroom, period. Would you offer me a puppy by removing CNN 10, the district-approved, from the district-approved materials list, please? I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, may I speak?
Yes, Mr. Chadwick.
I had a meeting recently, and I was told that, well, I'd heard some controversy over the CNN 10 newscast, and began to examine some of the things that, and what I found on the, on the website, there are a myriad of topics and videos and things, and you go to one of the pages, and it says, "What is CNN 10?" The subtitle on that page was, "10 Out of 10," and up next, they talked about on April the 22nd, Pope Francis, Harvard, Seamus Chat, student loan, firearm injuries, April 21st, Pope Francis, Pete Hexeth, Israel, Abigail Garcia, Harvard, the 24th, Karl Reeves, Russia, Ukraine, FEMA, Harvard, Uvalde, and the 10 most important stories that they listed to read was, "He gets what he needs, Hexeth advises setup computers at the Pentagon. Trump writes Valdemir to stop after Russia launches deadliest attacks in Kiev." And there are, there were seven others, I won't take time to read. But I was told that teachers have now been asked to use CNN videos for career information. See the, see the thing on career and write, use their, use that as their writing points for career. None of the things that I've listed and others that I'm here, not to take the time to read, I find it very difficult to get a, a career motivation out of. And as a result, I wish to, I wish to offer a motion that we divest ourselves from CNN 10.
It's not on the agenda, Mr. Chadwick, so we can't make a motion.
Well, I talked to the TSBA lawyer this morning, and since I had requested to be on the agenda, and it was not on the agenda, he said it was appropriate.
My name's Chadwick, motion to suspend the rules, please.
Have a motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Parker, do we have a second? Second, have a second? Any other discussion? Vote, please.
Hold on, I was in my email, let me figure out how to get back, okay?
My own sleep target.
Six yeses. Motion carries.
Suspend the rules for Mr. Chadwick to go ahead and add to the agenda.
Well, I can give you other examples.
No, Mr. Chadwick, we're in suspended rules, so you can add to the agenda right now if you'd like to.
Okay, well, I'm moving that we add the agenda, this discussion on CNN 10.
Second the motion.
Where are we gonna put it?
Sir?
Where do you, where do you want to put it in?
We want to put it right under Communications, right, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
We have a motion in a second. Vote, please. Six yeses. Motion carries.
Motion back to regular session.
Second. Vote, please, to return to regular session. Six yeses. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes. It's on the agenda, but we kept discussing.
Discuss it or?
Well, I think it's been discussed enough. There's, there's just, even when the, even when the TV is turned on and all these other stories come up, if it's, if it's being used to write critical, to use writing points about careers, I don't see how any of this has anything to do with careers, you know, it's just the careers that our kids need to know something about. So that's why I'm moving that we, again, divest ourselves from the CNN 10 program.
Mr. Chadwick, can I, can I ask you to pull that motion and make one that takes all the news out of it?
All the news?
Yeah, we, we don't want to pull CNN and not pull Fox. That would be my recommendation.
Yes.
If we just pull the news, political news out of it, and, and that would be what I would ask you to make a motion on.
I don't, yes, I don't understand why the teacher can't come up with local talking points about things going on. I mean, the idea that septic tanks are bad for the county, what, 90-something percent of the kids in Charlotte are on a septic tank. You know, cattle are bad because they're eating up the forage. How many farms are in that district? You know, it's, there's things that are being discussed are not, not there, so. All news problems, I mean, products, yes. Grant to that.
Can you restate the motion, just for the clarity, Mr. Chadwick?
To remove CNN 10 and other news organizations that are being used to promote- To remove CNN 10 and other news organizations that are being used to promote agendas removed from our system.
I'll second the motion. I'd like some discussion if you can, Mr. Chair. Well, thank y'all for speaking on it. I can't disagree with anything that any, any of y'all said. But I, I do want to say, if it pleases the Chair, I'd like to, I don't want to leave. I'd like to talk about the, the puppy, if that's okay. Because I don't want anybody to feel like our administration did not move forward on this, because they did and they, they put something out. So if it's okay, I'd like to read what the, what the administration did put out, just so that everybody knows that, that it was worked on a little bit. I'm not in disagreement that it doesn't need to be removed, but I just don't want anybody to think our administration did not work on it a little bit. So this was done by our secondary director sister over there, my nickname for her, and I think Mr. Winston worked on this. So she starts off just talking about thanking the teachers for everything they're doing, but very, very clear and stern saying, "Moving forward, it is critical that all classrooms activities align with middle school career curriculum standards. Please keep in mind, standard assignment, all activities must directly connect to the career standards." Next bullet point, external resources. Preview news segments and other resources. This includes, but not limited to, any video, news cast, article, or external use. Use only the parts directly specific to career industry that clearly links to careers and standards. Do not use the entire episode or articles in that segment. Next bullet point, writing prompts. Ensure writing prompts, reading, and viewing align with your course specific, specific standards. Next bullet point, career writing focus for career class. Focus writing on high school career areas in meeting standards and prepare students for the transition from middle school to high school and from high school beyond. Writing ideas. Consider using races, that's an acronym for something I don't know, template for professional emails, career journals, and exploration, exploration essays. The component fits well with the career planning standards. The main goal is that every lesson and assignment clearly connects to the state standards, ensuring focused and relevant career development for our students. Thank you for all your hard work. So I just wanted to say that, just, just to know that the administration was moving forward. I can't disagree with anything that anybody spoke about, and anybody that knows anything about me knows that I feel, feel that way about any particular news group, but all, all of them have their own agenda that they're pushing, and I don't disagree with Mr. Chadwick. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Any other discussion?
I have a couple comments.
Mr. Haley?
I think I stay pretty abreast on what goes on, but this is all news to me tonight. And I don't disagree with anything any of y'all said. Miss Conti enjoyed your words. They were very good, and they, they speak of what I feel on a lot of things too. But my vote on this will be strictly procedural. It has nothing to do with our support or don't support. I would, when we have a communication and made aware of something from a board standpoint, I think that we would have the opportunity to look into it before making the vote. If I had to vote tonight and say I agree or disagree with what you're saying, I think it would probably be best to agree and probably best to vote it away. But I think when we talk about all news sources, I think that can have some unintended consequences. What is a news source at that point? You know, is it the, is it the, the school paper? Is it those type of issues? So I don't disagree with you and, and feel like I'm going to wind up supporting that. But I think doing it on what I've seen tonight, the follow-up you mentioned, glad you read that. I just went back and checked my emails. If I got it, I missed it. I don't know where it's at. But I would love the opportunity to hear what they say, hear from my director on what's been done, what's being done about it, and give that, the process, an opportunity to carry itself out properly. And then if I don't agree with it, as early as next month, I will be glad to have information provided to look over and make a conscious vote procedurally, not in principle. So, my vote.
Any other discussion?
Phil?
One thing that I would like to point out that is in the email that Dr. Marvin sent to all the career teachers. It says, "Do not use entire episodes or articles if only a segment is relevant." And I think that's kind of important in this discussion because, though I agree with the things, I'm, I'm kind of like Mr. Haley in that I would like, I've not looked at these. I'd like to kind of look at them, and I'd like to hear more from our director and perhaps from Dr. Marvin about conversations that she might have had with these career teachers, if any. Because I do think it's important if that, not to watch the entire episode, if only a portion of that is related to their career. So that, to me, was a key that was in this email that you did not read. So I'd just like to hear more from our administration.
Who's that email from?
They just passed it out. It's from...
I got an email a couple of days ago from, when I was talking to Ms. Harris, and it came from Dr. Winston, Ms. Misty Marvin, which has been working on in the past, I guess probably maybe two weeks ago, something around that nature, where we were kind of looking into it, and Dr. Marvin came up with that and passed it to him. And so I have that email. That's what I read. I, I'm not, I kind of shooed away whatever Christie was headed out because I thought it was the same thing, and I apologize for that, but that's, that's what I had that I kind of passed along to them.
Where, where do you get a career talking point out of tourist massacre in Kosovo? McDonald's introduces its first new permanent addition to its menu in four years. It's like McDonald's. Metabolic syndrome is a big risk factor for early dementia. Where do you, where do you get career doctors, maybe? But many of these, they're not broken up into segments. They just go from one thing into another, and when the, when the video is on, it's on for 10 minutes.
Chair, can I make a motion to postpone to the next meeting to give us an opportunity to see this? It's not a point of agreeing or disagreeing. I'd just like to hear it more than...
Can we make that motion?
Have the same information.
Already on the table?
A motion to postpone for a certain time or to table takes precedence over the main motion, so yeah.
It wants to be for next month. I don't want to put it off. It's not a delay. It's just to gather information to be procedurally right because the next issue might be something of a totally different nature, and I would like to sit and act properly in that order.
So we have a motion to postpone it to the next board meeting?
The third meeting.
I'll second that. We have a motion to postpone it to the next board meeting in a second. Any other discussion?
Chair, I would just comment, my thoughts are aligning with your...
I'm sorry. On the Roberts Rules of Order, now the only discussion is on the incidental postponement motion, so...
Vote, please. Keeping you busy tonight.
I'm sorry, just give me one second.
You'll be seeing why you did that.
Don't vote on that one. She's got to...
Okay. Relax. I think I hit a button. Voting's open.
I want the same as postponed.
Yeah, it's a postponement for a definite time, and it takes precedence over the main motion.
Ms. Brogdon, yes. Mr. Chadwick, no. Mr. Haley, yes. Ms. Lampley, yes. Mr. Parker, yes. Ms. Thiel, yes.
So motion carries to postpone it to the next meeting. Next, we move on. Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry. May I call for a point of privilege? And I just wanted to share, again, for the benefit of everyone, my perspective is this is a broad possible change in procedure for our teachers. What are they trying to accomplish? What are the resources that are out there? I would like to look at the whole issue, and how do we still teach our children? And not just write something that throws out without replacement or just having to... So I just would like to understand it all. Again, this was just new tonight. And this will give us some time to just think about it and, and understand the full breadth of what we're talking about and how to go forward. I do appreciate all the comments.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. We move on to curriculum and instruction.
Madam Chair, board members, I brought the list of textbook committee for the science adoption for you to see. What I have learned is historically, you have been given a list of those teachers who worked on the adoption committee with Ms. Ravi Bakka. We're very proud of these teachers, all their hard work. They have spent many hours looking through the curriculum, and we have adopted, I shared the adoption information with you at our last, I think it was, planning session. I will lay this up here so that you can see which teachers were a part of being selected for the committee.
Thank you. Next, we move to finance, monthly financial report.
First page, you'll see the summary. Our revenues are up compared to last year. Expenditures down. Property tax and sales tax are both up. Utilities are up. Diesel fuel and gasoline are both down. On the next sheet, you'll see the summary level total for each fund, 141, 142, 143, and 177. And then you'll see the balance sheet summarized for each of the funds as well.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Underhill?
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve the monthly financial report for all funds. I'll second. Have a second. Ms. Lampley? Any other discussion? Vote, please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. Next, we have quarterly reports.
So these are the third quarter reports ending March 2025 for 141, 142, 143, and 177.
Do we have any questions? Have a motion to approve the quarterly reports.
Move. Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the quarterly reports. Any other discussion? Vote, please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to school health. Our next agenda item will be to discuss the nursing MRP contract.
So this would be approving us to use Stellar for Medicaid reimbursement for health, for school nursing services. There were some changes made to the contract by Mr. Hall, but those will be, those are being finalized by Stellar. But so they're different than what your packet shows. But Mr. Hall did review this packet or this contract.
That, that is correct, board members. I, I made a couple of tweaks to the contract just to clarify some things and some responsibilities to make clear that Stellar had certain rights and responsibilities under the contract. I'm happy to answer any questions, ma'am.
Recommendation of the administration?
I would ask that you would approve this contract.
Move to approve.
What's your cost?
Nothing.
We are approving the contract as amended by Mr. Hall.
Yes, that's my motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick. Do we have any other discussion? Vote, please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. Next, we have clinic visit, visit data.
So I gave you a color copy on your desk, but the first three pages are for the third nine weeks, and the last three pages are for current school year up until the end of the third nine weeks. This is just talking about the number of clinic visits to the nurses as well as the percentage that has returned to class. And then at the bottom of the first page is the graph of that, like what schools have the most visits, which schools have the less, least visits. The second page is talking about emergency response, emergency medications, and medication layperson visits. And the third page is about hearing vision screens as well as referrals to medical and mental health providers.
Next, we have maintenance.
Dr. Sutherland had asked... Dr. Sutherland had asked that snap a few pictures of a little bit of work that's been done at high school at the... Can we bring that in? This is in the hallway of the shop building where those two restrooms were that baseball facilities was going to use during the game. It's just a shot leading into men's and women's restroom. The fact that they did turn the door around at the end of the hallway to make handicap-accessible entrance, and ADA sidewalk coming in the end of the building. Ben, I don't know if you can scroll through the other pictures. I assume y'all can see them there. I made the recommendation to Dr. Sutherland. When we talked about this, we first talked about adding a door in the hallway so that when people come in from the baseball field, they can only go in so far. And so they've been using it now for, yeah, a month, maybe, maybe a little more than that. Really hadn't seen any damage to the hallway, the teachers and all the classroom keeping the doors locked in the evenings when they leave. I'm going to make a recommendation, as I did to Dr. I'm going to make a recommendation, as I did to Dr. Sutherland, that we just pass that by and let's don't, I'm going to call it, waste the money to put a door in there right now. We can always come back and do it later if there's a future problem. It'll give you more money to your 177 fund to use somewhere else if that's what you want to do. With that same recommendation, I've also asked her for the blessing to go ahead and put in some ventilation fans. That was part of that original project. You guys approved doing the sidewalk and turning the door. I'm going to ask to go ahead and do that. I'm going to say if we do that, it'll still save y'all $24,000 to $28,000 somewhere in that neighborhood you can use somewhere else. So it's your blessing or Dr. Sutherland's blessing. I think that's the route we ought to go and put that to your sports complex or what other issues you're doing. And I don't know if that needs a vote because the vent fan is not that much money. So I'm going to say $4,500, we're going to complete that. She just asked to bring you up to speed on it.
Ms. Lamplie?
Is there a camera in that area?
There's actually a camera at both ends of that hallway when you enter, looking straight down the hallway.
I just wondered if there was like some kind of signage to just sort of indicate that might help if you're worried about vandalism or people running around.
So there's cameras inside the hallway, I'll tell you that. And there is signage at the, at the door, at the entrance of the restrooms. Of course, handicap, it's got Braille on it and all that stuff as well, but we'd do some additional signage we could.
It's a straight shop, one at the other, little dog, but you can see one and the other and all the classrooms on the side, shop on one side, classrooms and all those doors locked. That was discussed at first about just leaving it open and then if that was a concern for them, we could block them right there.
Probably the major concern I have right now, if we add that door in that hallway, we're going to have to put a holdup device on it during the day. And if you could, you would be able to get to, Jeff, by this time, I guess it would change, it would actually change to even get to the men's restroom. You would have to go through that doorway if somebody closed the door. Now you have to exit the building and go all the way around the building to get back in, or somebody's got to come open that door in the hallway. You don't have that problem right now, so why run the risk of putting the kids outside the building? I think it's something, I think it's, we can just push it off and monitor it for a while and if we need to circle back to it.
Any other questions?
Ms. Taylor? Sure.
No, I don't have a question. I'm going to harass you.
I know you are.
You asked once about how to get stuff done and you just did it. Nice one.
Any, anything else?
That's all on that. I think I'm presenting the first part of the next thing you have.
Next is Lauch, Cook, Martin, DCHS projects.
Madam Chairman, I've been asked to present, Mr. Lauch sent me the paperwork, I think, it's a handout. Have y'all sent that around to everybody?
Yes.
So he has recommended using Providence Builders as the construction manager on the high wall project at Dixon County High for the high wall and roof around the office. You can see the second page on the scoring sheet and they, they come in slightly above Codale and had two others there. And Providence is just the best selection with, I think it was four people that scored it. I scored it. I was probably a little tougher on them than some of them, like Mr. Corleau did and Lang Lau and someone else from their firm. And I'm not going to say, I'm not sure exactly. It might have been Brad Martin. So it was scored and Mr. Lang Lau made the recommendation to move forward with him as your construction manager.
Just for the high wall?
Just for the high wall project. The board will have to vote and approve that so they can start coming up with numbers. They'll get, they'll get the bids and all together and bring a, bring an offer back to the board for y'all to approve. This would be for the approval of the high wall construction manager.
I think it's saying we already approved, use the process, it's just approving the choice of.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve your recommendation of Providence.
Sir.
Have a motion to approve, to retain the services of Providence Builders. In a second, any other discussion? Vote please.
You made the second.
I did.
Six yeses.
Madam Chairman, just for an update, we did receive the request for qualifications today for the construction manager of the sports complex. Those will be scored and probably back to you at the next meetings probably. I don't know that they would be back. I think y'all might have something going on first of the week that won't be back for that, but maybe even a work session meeting or something and they had to be approved at the next board meeting. But I'm going to sit down, but if y'all have any other questions about the sports complex or anything you need to ask Mr. Corleau, he's back in town tonight, so I'll let y'all.
He's just about rolling everything up. We needed, if he contracts and when the county fund said you could spend your money on them, we, we got the contract out real quick. Probably he told you that we got the proposals in from four other real good contractors for sports facilities. We may ask you all, we're planning on grading those this weekend or Monday or Tuesday, something like that. We'll become if you with the proposal, we might ask that if, if it's possible that we could have another special meeting where we can get them on board. We need them where we can finish up the sports facilities. If you, you have, you have work sessions already planned, I just wondered if you could have a special meeting, maybe before or after you do something with your attorney.
Thank you. Do we have any, any questions?
You want to just get them going? You don't want to wait till the end of next month.
We've got, we've got to have them going where they can start going out, getting the subcontractors together.
Yes, sir.
Where we can get a real price guaranteed some amount of.
Have any other questions for Mr. Corleone?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm here. Can we take a break?
Yes, we're going to take a five minute recess.
Resources?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Brogdon. So of course we have the Human Resource Report for April 2025. We have our retirements, resignations, reassignments, hires, leave of absence. All of those are listed. Next, we have the report where it shows our resignations, retirements and so forth from last month, the one with the graphics. The other item that is under the HR report are the job descriptions. And I gave these to you at the planning session and they are all the same except for one. So on the accountability, strategic planning and testing, K-12 director, we've uploaded the correct one with the title. There's a change in the title. And then the calendar, it's a 12-month, 240 days. So that is the only adjustment that has been made on those job descriptions that you received during planning.
Question about the job description. And perhaps this is not something that you can answer legally. But under the leave of absence.
Back to the.
Back to that report. Um, will these individuals be returning before the next school year begins?
Some of them possibly. I couldn't tell you exactly which ones, but not all of them are for the whole time period.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I can't.
Well, I just exited out of the whole thing. I'm finished. This meeting is over.
I lost it too.
No, it is not.
Well, normally Dr. Sutherland will recognize our.
I will, let him be.
Have any questions for Ms. Hall on the job descriptions?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would like to read our retirements. Donna Breton, history teacher, Dixon County High School, 24 years. Mildred Clifton, ERC, teacher assistant, Charlotte Elementary School, 29 years. Nancy Frazier, school bus driver, 23 years. Johnny Krantz, full-time bus driver, 50 years. We want to thank each of them for their service.
Next, we have student services field trips.
Yes, ma'am. We have overnight field trips. As I was looking at these, I realized that Creekwood, the music in the park, they just sent me the chaperones' cell phone numbers. And so I will give that printed and added to this packet. That's the only thing I noticed that wasn't attached. So Creekwood Music in the Park, Louisville, Kentucky. Creekwood High School Choir Competition, Dollywood. And then Cheer Camp, Ferguson County High School at Auburn University.
I've had concern spoken to me about all these trips being done while we're going through testing, you know, and course testing coming up. And I know it's competition, there's not much you can do about that, but seems like we're leaving, we're giving out a whole lot of trips for our kids going out before using the course test.
I'm going to refer to my Director of Instruction. Are you seeing a lot of field trips going out?
And then with a lot of the high school and stuff, again, competitions is not much you can change, the UCA Summer Cheer Camp.
I think that one was in July.
Well.
That's in July.
Crack and feel, whatever the ones there. Anyway, it was just a concern someone had. I know when I was there, the coaches would send around a sheet, you know, this person's going to be on a trip, you know, are they okay to go or what, you know? And I think I said earlier, couple of sessions ago, that I hope the coaches, you know, keep up with the grades on the students that.
Yes, sir, thanks to you. Anyone who's on a field trip, regardless.
Thank you.
Motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. You have a second? For the field trips.
I'll second.
You have a second, Ms. Lampley? Any other discussion? Vote please. Look it, I'm sorry. Six yeses. Motion carries. Next, we have administration policies, first read.
Yes, ma'am. The first one is 4.205 for first read. There was one change from the planning session. It was requested at the planning session, some clarification on the timeline. So if you look on page two, line 10, I believe the previous version said in a timely manner, and it now says within 10 days of the notification being sent to parents. Just to make that a little clearer on that timeline.
Most approve 4.205 on the first read.
Sorry, I've done something wrong.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve policy 4.205, enrollment in college-level courses. Any other discussion? Vote please. Let me repeat who made the motion. Mr. Parker.
Her second question.
Thank you. Six yeses.
Next is 5.701, substitute teachers. There have been no changes since the planning session. Ms. Hall and Ms. Underhill both reviewed the changes that you see highlighted and said those match our current procedures.
Motion to approve 5.701 on the first read.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve 5.701, substitute teachers on first read. Any other discussion? Vote please. Six yeses. Motion carries next.
6.205, student assignment. This was updated to reflect the TSBA model policy and the section in the in our previous version or our current version about open enrollment has been moved to 6.206, transfer within the system. No changes have been made since the planning session.
So it's a complete strike, right?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you.
Never mind, I've stayed, got you. Move to approve 6.205 on the first read.
Motion to approve 6.205 student assignment with the second by Ms. Lampley. Any other discussion? Vote please. Six yeses. Motion carries. Next, we have.
6.206, transfer within the system. And as we discussed at the planning session, these changes are because of a change in state law that affect our open zone, outer zone. So we needed to change our previous or current policy to reflect the current state law surrounding open enrollment.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I got a few things on this. I discussed it a little bit with the administration, Mr. Winston. You know, being out of zone, we, you know, I think I had discussed with Ms. Christie too. So we have a section in Chatham County that go to school with us. If you was to continue down Rock Springs Road before you get to Montgomery County, it's about eight or nine miles of Chatham County that's landlocked between us and Montgomery County and the river. So those kids go to our schools. We have some staff that live there too. I think it's what, 10, 10 elementaries? There's definitely a few middles that I can think of at least two Creekwood kids. They're out of zone. They fill out out-of-zone forms every year. They come to our school tuition-free as an agreement that I guess we have with Chatham County. So I guess a little, I guess that, I actually drove through their day. They're building houses out that way right now. So I guess in the counting of the seats, these kids are attending Charlotte Elementary, Charlotte Middle and Creekwood High School. So when we're counting the seats, I think those are technically out-of-zone kids that are zoned for us. So I guess we need to make sure that we leave room for that section and those kids when we count the seats that are available. And I don't know if we put a little verbiage in there or would. And I guess I'd.
They would be grandfathered in.
I think those landlocked areas get precedence. They, I really probably filled out a county out of information, but they've always had precedence to come here by an agreement.
We have the students. I asked Ms. Melinda Fortner to look into that and pull the students.
Yeah, just I guess in the future, you know, if as that area grows, as long as they got presence, I don't want them to be forgotten and think that they have to get into a lottery to get into our school. The only other question I kind of seen a little bit of concern on this policy is is the lottery itself and what that looks like. I don't know if we're drawing names out of a hat, rock, paper, scissors. Not sure what that lottery is, but I feel like, and I feel like it's important we probably make sure that we get this passed in May so that the administration can do as the policy says, move into the next year. But whatever that lottery looks like, if, I'm assuming it's the way I read it, if we got three seats and there's 10 people that want to go to said school, then we're going to somehow figure out how to randomly select them. And I don't know where or when, or maybe it's actually at, you know, at the board meeting. I don't know. Or somehow you do it in the eye of the public. Because I can foresee a issue that says, oh, of course, of course that kid got in there because his brother's second uncle third removed, Mr. Haley, and that's why he got in there. You know, and I just, yeah, football player, athletics and a lot of different things that I can see. So I guess the lottery just being open to the public, maybe a public meeting where everybody who wants to attend attends. I don't think the meeting will last that long if you're just drawing names out of a hat or numbers out of a hat. But I just, I feel like doing it behind closed doors could just become an issue or something. So I don't know if maybe we add a little literature in there on how it's done, with the explanation of when people go on our website to look at it, at least they'll know how it's done. And maybe even set the same date. The only reason I say the board meeting, because of board meeting, I'm assuming, just guessing, I might be wrong. I'm just thinking out loud that maybe by June, the administration would be ready to enroll those kids in school. Does that sound like about the right time?
Our current plan is for the out-of-zone to be open to students who are not already attending out-of-zone for the month of May and then to communicate with families sometime during the month of June about who has been selected.
And then maybe so. And the only reason I say the board meeting, because you could put that in there, the board meeting in June, and you wouldn't have to say the 23rd or a certain date, but the board meeting in June, say before the board meeting, everyone a six o'clock time slot. Because again, I don't think it'll take that long. It's going to be what it's going to be, but at least it would give the public time to see the lottery and everyone will leave some mad, some happy, and they'll all know it was done fairly at the end of that. That's all I had.
Mr. Hall, would you recommend putting, first, the Chatham County issue? And that has been passed down by word of mouth from, you know, one administration to the next, but do we need something in writing in our policy to ensure that?
Well, it's included in the law. So I mean, I think we're good with that. I mean, we can write it into the policy, but that is one of the factors that is delineated in Tennessee code, which is why we're changing this policy in the first one. So I don't think it hurts, but I mean, it's also already in the law. That's a factor in the decision-making process, and that's one of the higher-up factors that you look at. As to the second question, as to, I can't really recommend putting that procedure in the policy just because it's procedural related and it's, I don't disagree with Mr. Parker that it ought to be in the public eye, but that, I think it's fine to leave it to the director of schools or their designee and just, you know, you could say have the lottery, implement a lottery in public. Might satisfy that and then, then that way.
Put that in the policy or the procedure?
In the procedure.
When we can bring that administrative procedure to the planning session in May, so you all can see it. Um, and I'll make sure that's in there.
But Mr. Hall, you're saying in the policy to put that it would be done in a public fashion and leave the procedure, they do it to the procedure.
That's correct.
Yeah, I guess, you know, just when you kind of read it, um, if someone looks it up and has a plan that says, you know, I, I dislike this school and want my kid to go to this school, that when they look at it, I think the question is, you know, we're just saying there's going to be a lottery. They're like, you know, that doesn't really sum it up very good for the person, the random person who looks at our policy and just reads it. I know you don't want to put the whole procedure on there and we could policy the procedure to death, but, uh.
What about just, uh, inserting the word public in front of the word lottery and just say a public lottery to fill the available space?
I, I like that. Do you like my rock, paper, scissors idea or no?
I was going to write that in the procedure.
I would.
I was thinking about, uh, balls like the NBA.
Yeah. Move the pass six point two zero six on first read. With amended changes, the word public before lottery.
Have a motion to approve as amended six point two zero six transfers within the system, adding the word public in front of lottery. Any other discussion? Vote please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries.
And the last one for first read is the comprehensive screening plan. As we discussed at the planning session, um, that was a policy that we had in writing here in the office, but that was not online. Um, when we talked with TSBA about it, they said that they do not have a four point two zero two one or a comprehensive screening plan policy. To them, it looked more like a procedure. Um, and then speaking with our directors here, um, it's an outdated procedure for us, um, outdated policy slash procedure. So our recommendation is to strike it completely and to develop a new administrative procedure um, with our current procedures in place.
Move to strike. Four point two, two one.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second to strike the four point two zero two one comprehensive screening plan. Any other discussion? Vote please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. Next we move to second read policies.
We want to discuss any of these or vote on them as a block as we've done before?
And just since our last work session on these?
No, sir.
May object, do not block. Make a motion to approve on second reading, two point six oh one, five point eight oh one, six point two zero zero and six point two oh three, second read.
Second, the motion.
We have a motion to approve on second read, two point six zero one, five point eight oh one, six point two zero zero and six point two zero three. Any discussion? Vote please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries, thank you. Next we have director's report.
Members, I would like to ask Joey Holly to come up. One of the things that I always like to share with you is the athletic fund money from each school.
And I'll say thank you.
Yeah.
For this.
Your book. We typically do that at certain times of the year. Uh, one of the things that was requested was to, um, reach out to the schools and, uh, kind of find out, um, what their plans were for their money. And so I could probably do that. And so I would like for him to share, um, what he discussed and kind of what he found out.
After our extra meeting on Tuesday, try to get some data for you guys for tonight's meeting. Sorry, I didn't get, actually get it on the agenda, uh, but I didn't get all of it till later today. Uh, all the schools are listed here except for William James. Uh, they are still kind of in works as to what they're going to do with theirs. And their athletic record was out a half day today, so he wasn't able to, uh, follow it. Uh, try, try to get the information. Um, I, one thing I want to let you guys know, we started the flag football thought process. Uh, we weren't really sure where money was going to come from. And we told all the schools to hang tight on their bu- bucket money just in case we had to use some of the bucket money for, uh, the expenses for flag football. So some of them held on to it a little longer just because of that. And last month or so, they've realized that no, none of that money is going to be taken out for flag football. So now they've given list, um, cause actually at one time we were talking about coaches as well, not just equipment. We were talking about coaches supplements too. We weren't sure how that was going to follow through. So, uh, pretty much, um, everyone, you got everyone except for William James. Uh, Charlotte Middle, uh, I'm not real sure they can add all their bucket money up to get new bleachers in the gym. Uh, but that is kind of what they were hoping for. So I think if with some guidance, we can take that off the list and put something else a little more appropriate because, uh, they got a quick quote today and it was 129,000. And that's a very rough estimate is what it would cost. So they're not going to get enough bucket money to cover that. So they're going to be looking at something else. Burns and Dixon are, were both looking at floors. I think you guys have seen enough gym floors in the past to know that's a pretty good chunk to change also. So, um, other than that, uh, Burns Middle was looking for, uh, batting cage prices or, yeah, prices is the only other addition to, to this list. So you guys got any questions?
How often do we resurface our gym floors? Year, year wise, just curious.
They usually do something every year as far as reconditioning, but it's total, like we did at Dixon County High School, it might be 20 years. It's not often.
Can you tell me, I'm not sure I know, uh, Creekwood was wanting to do something with their gym floor. They've done a few things, but.
Yes.
Uh, can you tell me, do you have an idea of what they wanted to do and what that total would be?
Yeah, they, they were first looking at both gym floors. They got two, you know, so it's a big, a lot bigger area. So the cost of theirs would be over 50 probably if you did it all. At one time they were just wanting to do, uh, just the main floor. Think you guys knew about some of the discussions about logos and things like that? I'll just kind of leave it at that. Or since they weren't able to do that, they're kind of having to start over.
Right, so since I, I, I don't know this, but I would assume that they were hoping that they might get bucket money and that's not going to be available.
Well, they, they were the one school that actually spent most of theirs already.
Exactly. And so how do we go about, how would we go about resurfacing or whatever that's called for the Creekwood gym floor since we will not be having the buckets? Is that something that would become a capital expenditure or how would we approach that?
That would be up to you guys on, on that end of it, or it'd have to be something on the fundraiser.
I think we're going to have to look at that. It may be that we're suspending, we're going to look at that year to year depending on what our budget looks like. And so I think we've only come up with the proposal of suspending that bucket for the 25, 26 year. And then I think we, uh, look at that, reexamine it annually.
I guess my, you know, the one reason I ask that question is, aren't middle schools obviously not 20 years old? So I'm just kind of curious, like, I mean, if that's what they want to do.
Should be warranty work, shouldn't it?
Huh?
Should be warranty work, shouldn't it?
I mean, it, it should be, right? I would think so, I hope it.
And they might, may just want to do an annual thing that they have.
A little refinishing thing or something, just go polish it out. You know, I mean, surely we're not going to refinish that floor like we did Dixon High School.
And, and as a reminder, the middle schools don't get quite the same bucket money. So it would take them a few more years to get all that money.
I saw on here Dixon County uniforms football. I was there that night that they honored the, uh,
Hamilton.
Hamilton. Where did those uniforms come from?
That they honored who?
The Hamilton, you have the Hamilton graduates, the Hamilton School football players.
Where did that, say that one more time?
Where did the money come from to, to purchase those?
I'm not.
For these guys. A private donation or something?
Could have been.
I mean, it was a fine thing. I'm not knocking that. It was just, I just wondered where they, you know, got the, at the uniforms.
I don't know exactly, I hate to say.
So the schools have funds, activity funds. We save for fundraisers, lots of things go in it, and this audit once a year, you know, you get a copy of that. I didn't see one from last year, it used to come. Y'all got the questionnaire this past year for the audit? Were y'all on the board by the time they came out or from Joel Parks? You'll, you'll get a questionnaire coming up on the annual audit. And when they perform the audit, you'll see what the school is bringing for fundraising, where they spend and things like that too.
It may have been a donation. There was, there was a lot of excitement with that.
Yeah, it was nice.
It was a really good night. It was actually 10 or 12 football players from that team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. The next item I wanted to share with you, uh, the commissioner approved our stockpile professional development days for the 25, 26 school year, and those will be on September 2nd, October 27th and January the 5th. Uh, we have been very busy this week and last week with T K. And, um, DLA students, uh, were testing here. And Dr. Field did a great job with administering that. And the students, when I would come in and, and talk to them on the way out, I would say, did you do well? And they would say, yeah, they felt good about it. Um, I, I hope that they did well and looking forward to seeing the results of that. So do you have anything to add, Dr. Field?
Two. Students, I feel like, no, because I was in there working so much on the computer.
Yes. Excited about that. And we appreciate Jamie Hitchens helping you in that endeavor. Uh, yesterday I had lunch with seniors from Creekwood High School and Dixon County High School. Uh, Mary Morrow joined me, Ms. Ernestine, Dr. Winstead and Dr. Marvin. It was wonderful, um, to hear their perspective when I could get them to talk, um, around their experience. And I really emphasized, this is the end of your career as a student in the Dixon County public school system. So talk to me about your memories, what, what's gone well? And then what would you change to make us better? And so, um, good conversations, don't you think so? Um, I think they were, um, kind of taken back because they were asked their opinion. Um, but it matters to me where, um, what students think about their experience with us. And so I appreciate that and we'll be posting that picture with that group. I will be having breakfast with fifth graders and lunch with our middle schoolers to get their perspective of their experience. Um, in the elementary, since fifth grade is the end of their elementary careers and sixth, eighth graders, since that's the end of middle school. It's all about getting better and I want students to know their voice matters. And so, um, I'll give you, uh, right up with that. We are currently, Ms. Ernestine and I and Dr. Winstead, looking at our remote learning day feedback that we received from our staff, certified and classified staff. It's very interesting, overall positive. They appreciated the upfront communication. Um, they have given us things to think about moving into the 25, 26 year on how we can get that better. And so Ms. Ernestine is over a project about how we're going to communicate to parents um, internally and to students, what those expectations look like for the new year. So stay tuned and we will share that once we build that out. Uh, but I will share more of that data as soon as, um, we get it in a form that's not so overwhelming because I think it was around 35 pages. So, um, but it had really good information and I would like to share that with the directors first before I got that out. We have a conversation with the director, my last one, the topic is going to be transitions and how important transitions are for our students from elementary going into kindergarten, their first experience and exposure with us to leaving our elementaries to go to middle school and middle school going up to high school. Those are important times of children's lives, especially our parents because they really get concerned about transitions. And so I will have several of the staff there and we will welcome any feedback and how we can even get better with our transitions. I will say this year, we had all of our, um, fifth grade stu-, uh, sixth grade students write our upcoming sixth graders, or was it eighth graders? Eighth grade wrote to upcoming sixth grader, sent a card in the mail to them. And we did that with our uprising freshman receipt cards. The seniors wrote those to our freshmen. And then what did we do in the elementary? Fifth graders wrote it to incoming kindergarten. And if you want to see what the cards look like, um, my two instructional directors of, um, K-12 uh, have them framed in their offices. And so the students at the high school made those for us. And so, um, I really haven't received any feedback from parents or students around that, but I got the idea, uh, because that's what they do at the college level. My daughter Kennedy received a card from a student at, um, Cookeville, and I thought, we can do that. And so I just stole the idea and implemented it. So, um, anyway, we're going to do that again this year.
Where's your conversation with the director going to be located at?
Where is that one? Maybe back at the Clement Railroad. Transition. Oh, that one was at the Bib Center, I'm sorry, the Bib Center. Uh, but I will have one more before school is out.
Yeah, when's your next one?
I don't know.
Oh.
I don't know yet, but it will be at the Clement Railroad Museum.
I had a question, my lady, that it be published better.
Sir?
So she could attend.
Oh, yes, um, we got some really good feedback on could I do an in-touch message around those dates? Oh, yes. We got some really good feedback on, could I do an in-touch message around those dates? And I said, "Absolutely." So I thought that was a good feedback. And then maybe a text message that goes out to all parents through in-touch. And I think those are two things that we're going to implement. And we did implement 101.5, the ride. They typically announce those for us as well. So that's always nice. Budget conversations still continuing, and so we will continue those. And last night, I met with baseball parents at the high school and had a really great conversation. And I think we had about 40 individuals show and wanted to brag on all of the coaches and moving forward in our baseball program. So good conversations. And that's it.
Next, we have comments by DCEA.
Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
There are some truly great things happening in Dixon County schools this month. Meridian Architecture is mentoring William James math students on a design project where students are creating apartment floor plans using math translations. Ms. Dieter says that it's going exceptionally well. The students have asked wonderful questions during their Zoom meetings and that the students are highly engaged in this learning process. The architects will judge the designs in person and offer advice for next steps. And this will take place at 1:15 on May the 16th at William James Middle School. Jobs for American Graduates, or JAGTN class at Creekwood High School, had a very successful mock interview day. Each senior went through four to six interviews with different companies and colleges. These students gained valuable employability skills and are more career or college ready. The Discovery School will hold its Living History Museum on May 8th from 8:15 to 9:00 a.m. As part of our commitment to the future educators of Dixon County, DCEA is proud to be sponsoring the Educators Rising Signing Day on May 6th at 3:30 p.m. at Mulberry Mill. We anticipate around 30 aspiring educators from both high schools will show their commitment to join the profession, and all the future teachers will receive a DCEA mentor to help them as they navigate their college journey. Lastly, Teacher Appreciation Week begins Monday, May 5th, and runs through Friday, May the 9th. There are 64,105 teachers in the state of Tennessee. We want to proudly recognize the 1,300 educators in Dixon County and remind everyone about the district banquet at 6:00 p.m. on May the 13th at Dixon County High School. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next, we have comments by board members.
I was going to say something about Lily, but I guess she bounced out. But it's always nice, you know, it's, it is, I do like hearing from the two high schools. And we usually have a couple months that now it feels like we're missing something in our board meeting, because we don't have any of them. So if anybody sees Lily later, I appreciate the time and of course, our other board member rotation, but it is always a good time. We'll enjoy the next ones next year, too. Other than that, good to meet you. Thank y'all for it.
Well, I just want to say, I was so proud to see people that had scored so high on their ACT scores. I just think that is a real blessing that we have in our county and that, you know, we talk about the 21 is what we want to get to, but we do have those students that have no intention of going to college that perhaps are not as interested as, and that might make our scores lower sometimes, but it was great to see those students. And I just look forward to see what they accomplish in their future.
That was impressive. Those scores were impressive.
I can just say, back in the day, when I did that, you didn't do it. And, you know, if you made a 16, that's all you really wanted because you're going to get in college if you made a 16. And so really, that's all I aspired to do.
What day was that?
Again, that was back in the 1970s.
68, you had to go to Austin P. I mean, 64, you had to go to Austin B. to take the test.
Correct. You did not get to do that in such a track.
Did you chisel the test with the hammer back there?
No, it was on paper.
But it was in number two pencil. I don't know if they're still doing it with the number two pencil or not, but they're not. Make sure you bring plenty of number two.
Right, Mr. Jaffe.
That's right.
Listen, I promise send them up.
This way, please.
Hey, I want to say that we need to have a planning session on Monday. The 28th. Planning session at 5:00 p.m.
Make it, Mr. Parker.
Do whatever you tell me to, Miss Chairman.
Be here at 5:00 p.m.
Yeah. To discuss budget stuff and then call a special session right after that. Or is that the proper way to do it, Mr. Hall?
You can call it before or after. Is this for the, for the?
It'll be for the hall and the budget because we're going to.
Okay.
So we'll, we'd have to have planning first.
Yeah, I mean, we want to have the planning meeting before we have the special session, so. We need to get that out.
That was my mistake about the executive session. We had that at planning and I forgot to remove.
I appreciate your mistake.
My mistake.
Madam Chair, do we want to also include in the call a special session for the construction manager?
For DCHS, yes.
On the athletic project?
Yes.
Okay.
And the budget, both of those were special session.
I ask on that, you said the construction manager for the athletic project would be ready Monday or this is a hall?
He agreed it would. He said it would be ready.
And then also the bids for the hall project? Because we approved the construction manager, yes or no? I'll get with Dr. Tubman.
You have to advertise the time of the special session? Are you going to have, or can we say it after the planning? Or do we need to advertise it's to be at 7:00 because planning might take two hours or what's your thoughts on that?
You can call it immediately after the planning session.
It does take a good time.
Because you're announcing the time of the planning session, so.
I have one more announcement. I would like to recognize Ben Lewis. Ben will be leaving us in May. He has taken another job in Nashville, and we're going to miss Ben. And we will be celebrating Ben, and you will get that email the day that we will be celebrating him so that you can drop by and wish him well. Ben, we appreciate you and all that you have done for Dixon County schools.
That's a long trip to come get information on how to run this.
Move to adjourn.